It is interesting. I think our senior class, I think we have the most.
Scott.
Good.
Hi Scott.
Hello.
Hi Randy. Jeremy, not Randy.
I know this is.
Because what you're doing is discrimination. You're discriminating against us.
Okay, I know it's true and I, part of me understands where you're coming from here, but this is not our decision or not, we're required, it's a state law that we are under.
It's not.
It's not a law to me.
But I put my mask on, I don't agree with it either, but I want my voice to be heard today.
Let me rephrase. We're gonna start the meeting here about 10 seconds.
That's the only reason I have my mask on.
You don't have to put a school down if you don't put it on.
If, we can, we're not gonna get into the weeds on what it is and isn't, but if the people that run the building don't enforce it, then we are punished by the state organ. That's the bottom line, so.
Okay, sorry too.
Mask on. You're welcome to submit comments in writing.
Okay, thank you.
This is before you're, it's starting.
Yeah Dana, we get to say.
You're, 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 you don't have a name tag here.
If you sit in that chair, I don't get your head in my camera.
I apologize.
This lady, you don't have to go to a podium here.
I don't have the right thing.
I didn't ask for that.
Oh, good. Isn't he on the? Yeah, all, all, tell him he can go, he can either do it during the public comment or wait.
I'll wait.
You wanna do your agenda item?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, I was gonna discuss, we can move that agenda item up so that he could have, I'll send his computer over.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. All right, let's get the show on the road at 6:00. We will call this meeting of the Central Curry School District Board of Directors to Order Wednesday, August 25th, 2021, Gold Beach, Oregon. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, uh, mission statement, who's there?
Just right there.
Oh, I guess I'm reading it.
I have it for you.
The mission of the Central Curry School District in partnership with families and communities is to ensure each and every student is prepared to succeed and contribute to a global society by engaging in a challenging personalized program of educational excellence. Okay. Agenda changes or anything?
Um, yeah, I, under the approval of hiring, we do have Joel Mar Martinez for High School Science.
Oh, okay. So we're adding that to the?
Yeah, approved, for the approval of hiring 3.2. I also have another request, which it could fit on either under the consent agenda or new business, however you wanna.
Hey guys.
Hello.
You're, can't talk tonight. If you're gonna be in here, you have to have a mask on.
Have you got one?
Yeah, there are some, right up.
Right up.
Right out there, right when you come in the door near the dispenser. Thank you.
We do have a, a request because it comes by, this request goes under the contract for the teachers, if they have any adjustment to their time off. We have a request from Mark Becker. He was able to get a hunting trip, a draw in Eastern Oregon, and it's his first time in 30 years of teaching he's ever asked for any time off. That would be unpaid leave. He's got his personal days that he'll take, but there's some additional four days, October 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th, that he is requesting to take as unpaid leave.
Do we wanna add that to the consent agenda?
Yeah, I was thinking 3.3.
Sure. I have no objection. Anything else? All right. Uh, number three, approval of a consent agenda. The May 6th and July 21 meeting minutes, approval of hiring, and 3.3 will be unpaid, or unpaid time off. Is it paid or unpaid?
Unpaid, unpaid leave, yeah.
The door is, 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 um, open, it was just noisy.
So I have a question, do we have to wear our masks when we're sitting?
Yes.
Really? There's people in the gym right now without a mask on.
Yeah.
And this is ridiculous. You guys just need to hear what we have to say.
Okay, folks.
And let us go. That's really all we ask.
Folks, this is a public meeting, this is a public building, if you're gonna be in here, you have to have a mask on.
Then why do you have people in the gym without masks on? You guys didn't go tell all of them.
Are, are, having sports practice?
No, it's not sports practice. There's people with masks on and people without.
If it was, it wouldn't be mask required though, right?
That's correct.
Cause it's after 3:00 PM, that's a tricky virus there.
Yeah, right, right. It's not honey, how is?
Hey guys, guys, look, look, timeout here, okay. I understand where you're coming from, I really do. We have no control of the decision.
So you guys aren't gonna try to do anything to try to help those of us that don't think that this is right? You guys are just gonna sit back and let this all happen?
Let me put it to you this way, we are elected officials of a public body. There is no scenario where we're going to direct anybody in this building to break and violate state law, and that's what they will be doing.
It's not law, the mandate, yeah.
No, I, I told these guys the same thing earlier.
Then we just all need to pull our kids out, is that what you're telling us?
No.
Cause if you guys are not gonna fight K Brown and OHA and help us to not mask these kids for eight hours a day, then we don't want our kids going to school here.
Let me finish. Okay, I, I'm not gonna argue about the mask mandate, what it is and what it isn't. The problem is that the people that run these buildings.
Don't we, don't our taxes pay for it?
Yes, they do.
Yes.
Folks, folks, the people that run these buildings, if they don't enforce this rule as written, they are violating a state law.
It's not a state law, it's amended.
So what happened when I walked in here in June and all you guys didn't have a mask on? And when I walked in?
Hey guys, we're not gonna have to debate outside the meeting, so please, we're not gonna wear a mask.
So then, okay, then we can sit in without a mask on?
No. You can sit with a mask, that's it. We're not gonna debate, continue the debate right now.
We'll be six feet away from everybody.
It doesn't matter, the, the, the rule is masks in buildings. Just respect the school for what it is.
Okay, that's fine, then I just, I'm just, well, my kids, they're not gonna do anything to help, they're not gonna do anything, they're just gonna sit back, so I'm done.
My son's upset and he doesn't have to wear masks, so like, how's that with him and then with others?
Folks, this isn't our decision.
I'm just asking.
Okay, and I, I know, I called the governor's office, I've had all of these conversations we all have, and if you want real change.
So you'd rather lose funding from a few students than lose funding from the state?
We have no, we have no choice, and.
Is what you're, I, I hear you said.
The, the debate here is, is overall, we have no control, this is a public meeting, if you're not gonna put a mask.
It's a public meeting, we're part of the public.
We're the public, we are the public.
If you're not gonna put a mask on, then you have to go, that's the bottom line.
So we just need to vote every single one of these people out that aren't gonna do anything for us, and we need to get out in the community more and find more people that are actually gonna do this. Cause this is ridiculous. I was already in here in June and nobody had a mask on until I walked in, and Tim Wilson goes, oh, we better mask up the minute I walked in. Four people at this table did not even have a mask on then, and you guys were all sitting here in June, nothing was wrong. These kids just went through all of summer school without a mask on and we had no problems.
I think it's pretty silly that my kid didn't have to wear a mask for kindergarten two weeks ago.
Exactly. Did you just let us sit in and be a part of it without a mask? We're making a point here.
Mask on, I, I understand.
You don't.
I, I hear you.
And who are you, you're the superintendent?
No, I'm the, I'm actually the vice chair of the board of chairs. I'll fight in private.
Daddy, cheese mama.
He let me know that too. So, for the record, for everybody.
Daddy, cheese mama.
Guys.
And is there a reason why this can't be held outside? So everybody can participate?
So everybody can participate, we're half of your participants right here in this little group that doesn't wanna mask down.
Guys, I, the, the, guys, the meeting's already in progress here, I, I'm not, we're not gonna adjourn the meeting.
Can we ask that we get a second meeting then?
Can you what?
Can we ask that we have a second meeting be held that can accommodate and not discriminate against anybody?
You can certainly ask.
How do we, how do we go about that?
You guys, this is a public meeting right now.
No, excuse me, I just.
It's not, it's not, it doesn't take place.
What you're not understanding is the public meeting is required to be held in public, it doesn't guarantee.
You're discriminating against, we're not in public because you're discriminating against.
We are not discriminating against anyone.
You're right, you're right, we all are a community here and we all do need to come together and not have a divisiveness. What we're asking is that you guys let us speak on our own accord and our behalf and what we believe in, and we believe that you guys should be able to listen to what we have to say. If everybody wants to be safe about it, then why can't we be in the fresh air and sunshine about it?
All the teachers are right there.
Guys, acknowledge this anymore.
Yeah.
That was valid.
That's totally valid.
No, you can, you can ask it for a, a separate.
So that's what I'm asking, that's what I'm asking right now, on the record?
I'm gonna have you talk to the superintendent. You can make sure you're first. His contact information is on the district website.
Great, great, you guys are very, very helpful and, um.
I was hoping to see where you guys stood and I see exactly where.
Yeah, 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 there you go.
Exactly, yep, and often they do a darn thing about it, just like they would in June. Let's go.
Yeah. Consent agenda. Yeah.
You have a motion on that?
Yes, please, cause I actually.
Can I get some clarity? We added 3.3, which is unpaid leave for Mark Becker, is that correct? Correct, yeah. And on 3.2, we have Joel Martinez added to that, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So is it as amended as a motion?
Yes.
Oh, okay, cause like, you're, you're not just doing the minutes, I'll do the whole thing. Well, yes, but there are some amendments. To the 3.3. I make a motion to approve 3.1, 3.2, and 3.3 as amended.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, okay, there's three ayes and one abstention by me due to a minor conflict of interest, then might be married to somebody on that list.
Oh, true.
Okay. Citizen input for non-agenda items. Guests must please state their name and address for the record. You have three minutes, and for those of you who have submitted comment cards, I think you guys have already heard the spiel, my spiel on masks, so you, you're welcome to take the podium here, we'll start with Holly Reynolds, if you'd like to, you've got three minutes.
Right here?
Yeah, yeah.
Holly Reynolds, so I really need to state my address?
For the record, yes, please.
Okay, 34093 Cedar Valley Road, Gold Beach, Oregon, 97444. Um, so I just, when the, what precautions is the school facing if we don't mask up for one? You said it's, it's not up to you, you don't.
This isn't really, well, like, if you have, would like to make a statement, you can make a statement if you have one, like, Q and A type stuff, you'd be all directed to Mr. Milburn about specific policies and things like that. Correct.
Okay, so then what exactly is this meeting for and how does it help the public?
If you would like to make a, a statement as to anything about the direction of the school district, on a fairly wide swath, you're not allowed to discuss specific personnel or anything like that, but aside from that big picture, if you'd like to say anything to us as a board, that now you're done.
Okay, well, for one, my child is getting held back from first grade this year because of everything that happened last year. He doesn't wanna go to school with a mask on. He went to school a week ago without a mask on and was happy and excited to do so, and now he's being told he has to wear a mask to go back to school, when he's already failed one year because of everything, now we're looking at him failing another year. And what are, is anyone doing about it? Nobody can say, except for it's not your guys' problem, or you have nothing, you have no control over the situation? We do have control, if you work in a group, you can't just say, I don't have any control over the situation. Where are one in 10 states in Oregon that are still mandated to wear masks? How does that make sense? Thank you.
You're next.
Well, I'm Jennifer Cuthada, 29678 Park Terrace, Gold Beach, Oregon. First of all, I don't want your guys' job. I commend you for trying to look out for the, the benefit of all of these children and you have a really tough job right now, so thank you for your effort. I do have some specific, specific questions for the superintendent, I will get hold of you later, Eric.
Great.
I do, I guess I just have more questions than anything. But I'm excited, this is my daughter's senior year, and I sure hope she gets as close to the normal gear as she can. I'm looking forward to the full-on graduation without any hindrances to her life goals. So, I know this COVID thing has been terrible, my son graduated in 2020 and he's still, he's lost all interest in everything, so thank you Scott. But I just thank you guys, and I will contact you, Eric, at a later date.
Great, thank you.
Actually, are you taking appointments in your office?
Yeah, if you will, go ahead and call, call ahead and set up a appointment.
I will do that, thank you.
Thank you, guys, both of you, for going about this the right way, and I appreciate that very much. Okay, district reports, looks like Crystal is absent tonight, and she emailed the data to everyone, so I know, unless anybody has any questions, direct goes to Crystal. The principal reports, Mrs. March, you're first.
Hey, since, since we're sitting at the table, I don't have to go to the podium, right?
No, no, you can stay right where you are.
Air high five, Dana. Okay, so you have my written report there, and then, um, just to add to that with staffing, because it's an ever-changing situation, I still have that four or five blend technically opened, but Eric and I are pursuing a highly promising lead, so I hope to make an announcement of that employment by next week, so, so definitely, I'm excited about the possibility of being finished hiring teachers six days before they come to school. And we're excited, we're excited to have Hannah too, as the reading specialist. On your yellow sheet, those numbers that Eric told you were from Friday, are actually, actually were slightly different yesterday, which caused me to kind of do a little shifting. So we actually lost a third grader, so that put it down to 26 kids in two classes, so that seems like every teacher's dream, but not very realistic. And then the fourth grade is actually at 47 today, and so I, I made a decision and called Mr. Milburn for his stamp of approval. I'm going to have all 26 third graders in one class, Sean Martin's going to teach it, Corbin Altman and Brianna McGinnis are both going to teach fourth grade. They'll start with some pretty low numbers, Brianna has 21 and Corby will have 20, for now, and then a blend with six fourth graders and 25, or not, excuse me, and 10 fifth graders, which is a very small class of 16 right now, but she's gonna get any new fifth graders that come. Still have 35 fifth graders, so it's one class of 25 and one class of 10. That's clear as mud to everyone. But what I was looking at was having third grades with 12 and 13, 14 kids in them, and then I was looking at a sixth, a fourth grade class that had 30, and a fifth grade class that had 29. So I, I had to make some, some tough decisions there, but I think that all in all, it's what's gonna work out best for kids, as a whole, three, five, so. Are there any questions about that? All right. And other than that, on a personal note, I'd just like to say that I've been officially working for two weeks, and everyone at Riley Creek and here have been nothing but welcoming and kind and full of information and very supportive, so I just, I'm really happy to be, I've chosen wisely, I guess, or you have, I don't know, but I just, I really wanna thank everybody who works here for, for their support, just starting out.
Thank you for being here. Okay, Mrs. Newdall, you're next.
Well, I have a few changes off mine as well. We changed our new student day, we have Ascend tonight, and we got introduced to most of the, they got introduced to most of the staff, that was a good portion of the ninth graders, but we're going to do a new student day also on next Wednesday for the remainder that didn't come, and also we have some new students that are not freshmen and were not involved in the bridge program, so we're just gonna meet and do a little bit with that. As of today, we only had about a third of our students registered online, that we picked up a bunch, I think a handful down in the Ascend meeting tonight, so hopefully that will get, keep moving. In the positive direction, a few updates, or in my updates section, let's see, you know that Chris Clark resigned from this library position earlier this summer, and so we, we don't have to list it on here, but we hired Chris Higgins from Riley Creek, thank you very much. To, to take his place, so we fortunately filled that really easily. Then we also have three out of our four new teachers are already in town and have actually checked in and have been starting to do stuff in schools, so that's pretty exciting. And I just wanted to mention, our new science teacher is still in transit, we're hoping that he'll be here near the start of school, but if you didn't hear about Joel Martinez, he's a Filipino and he has a master's in biology from the Deosal University in Manila, and so we're excited to have him. The logistics are a little bit of work to get through, so hopefully that will keep moving forward, hopefully more quickly than anything. And today, we finally finalized our academic schedule, so, class schedule, so that was a big deal, not for us. I just wanted to mention that we're, a couple changes down in the athletics section, we had like 149, that was our count, so I don't know, we might have fluctuated some since then, but our football season or opener is actually gonna change to the third, and it's gonna be hosted in St. Paul, so if you're interested in going to that. And soccer has a schedule, but they've been some teams moving in and out of the league, so that's why it's blank, it's undetermined, we don't, we don't have a solid schedule yet because of that, the last minute changes for some of the teams. And our press country season or, we opener, we also changed, cause I realized it was on the first day of school, and the coach was not comfortable with that either, so we, he rescheduled to the 10th in Veneta. So that is basic, basic changes for me, but so far we've had everybody excited about this year.
Very good, questions? Thank you. Superintendent, Mr. Milburn.
All right, so, the first thing on there is enrollment update, and we know that that's going to be a fluid number, it will rise, it will drop, and so, but we're, we're at a pretty decent number for attendance, but it'll be interesting with some people that aren't really happy with mask mandates, what will happen with our numbers? But they have been, been on the rise again, and a lot of kids excited to get back into the building and, and go to school. We're just happy, no matter how we have to do it, that we can have kids here every day and to have school for them. We know that there's a lot that we have to go through to be able to, to run school, we know that there's mandates, we know that there's all kinds of things that have to come down from, from the state, but what, what it all comes down to, we're just happy to have kids, we're happy to be able to provide the education for them, and I don't know, a teacher, administrator, bus driver, food service people, our custodians that haven't talked about the excitement to, to have school and to be able to do it, and really what it comes down to, I know we can go over, we can discuss, we can fight over what, what has to happen about masks or vaccines or whatever, but now is the time to, to really put our focus on how we can provide the best education for kids. And I, I just wanted to say myself, I've worked very diligently as a representative of this district and in my position with the Oregon Small Schools Association to work towards local control. We've, we've tried to do all that we can, we've wrote letters, we've testified, I've talked to state representatives, everything that we can to try to instill local control and to try to do what we can, but now is the time to, to go towards preparing school and preparing things for kids. And that's, that's really what I wanted to say about my message right now. I could go over these different things that are here and the things that are happening, you can read these pages, you can ask me about them, but if I had to say anything at all about a super intense report is, let's get down to business for helping kids and helping kids succeed. There are kids that are, have fallen behind because they weren't here every day in school, there are kids that need our support and our help, there's kids that need mental health supports that are not there when they're not here at school. We need to be able to, to really, in our best way, wrap our arms around them and to help them as much as we can. And I, I know we have the people to do it, I know we have the staff to do it, and I'm excited about school starting, so if you have any questions about what I have on the page, I'm happy to, to talk to you about it. I guess one thing I do want, wanted to mention is we do have the opportunity to do a grow your own program through South Coast ESD. What is really great about the program is they will work with any individual that we have on staff that wants to work towards getting a teaching degree. And that can be from those who aren't working towards bachelors, or those who are working towards getting a masters and had a bachelor's but working towards a masters to get their licensure. And what they will do is they will provide all of the funding for that individual to actually enroll in school, and to their tuition, to their books, to whatever their needs are to be able to, to get that licensure. The only agreement that the school has to make, and it's a small agreement compared to the investment that is in return, is to continue to pay for their wage while they're doing their student teaching. But in many cases, they can do their student teaching while they're working here, so it's kind of a win-win because we're already in many cases paying for that wage for them as they're doing their student teaching. So, for that small commitment, we're able to grow our own, within our own community and have people that want to be here and want to stick it out, through all the changes that happen, they'll be here. We've had such a hard time trying to fulfill all the teaching positions that we've had this year, and something like this is very exciting for us, as we look at it as administrators to be able to, to help out in providing a quality teacher that's been trained within our own school system.
All right, questions? Thank you, Mr. Milburn.
Absolutely.
All right, whole business, 6.1, we're putting the Ready School Safe Learner Framework for 2122.
Yeah. So I just wanted to, to bring to attention that that did receive an update. It's in your packet. And there wasn't really any real differences except for the mask mandate. That was added into the newest framework for that. And so that, that's the biggest change that you'll find within that. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in our Safe Return to In-Person Learning. But I did need to call to attention that that has been an update so that the public and so that the board knows about that change to the framework.
Okay. Questions, Board?
I have a question that I think you're going to answer probably in the next section.
The next one, probably. Yeah.
I think it's for the next section.
Okay. Moving on. Now, new business, 7.1, Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan.
Right. So you'll have a purple handout that is supplemental to what you had before. For the Safe Return Plans, we had to have a document that will be uploaded to the state system. So what I did is I took that information that will go into that document and I created a, a summary of, of the different sections that are, are in it. Highlighting that we're going to return to full-time in-person instruction five days a week with Friday still being our early release day. And the next part of it is face coverings. We will mandate that face coverings will be required and that we will follow the mandate as given to us by the governor's office and ODE. Now, some people will question that. Well, why, why are we doing that? Why aren't we following some of these other, other districts that have made some comments that they will not follow? Well, there's a couple of, of specific reasons that are very important. One is the overall safety of our children. And I, I know there can be debates. Every person's going to have a different, different take on that. But when we look at it truly, that's what we're, we're hoping for, is safety of our students, safety of our staff. The next thing is, like Mr. Wright said, there is a requirement for public officials to uphold a mandate. And as talked by the lawyers throughout the state, a mandate is the same thing as producing law. So it needs to be held up and it has to be done by not only our school board, but also our school staff, our administration. If we don't, we will receive a civil penalty. And that can be up to $500 for each incident that happens. And that is by school. So we could receive a $1,000 civil penalty per day by not upholding the masking rules. The next thing that can happen as well is if myself, I don't uphold it, I, and I say, "Staff, you don't have to. We're not going to follow this", then I can lose my license as an administrator. It is a penalty that can be brought down. If a teacher decides like, "No, this can't happen. We're not going to do it", then the teacher can also have some kind of punitive action against their license as well and they can be stripped of their license. And it also takes away any liability insurance coverage that we may have as a district. So there's a lot of reasons why we have to follow through with it. Whether we agree with it or not, those, those are very much the topics of, of why we, we have to. The next thing is physical distancing. We will, in all that we can, try to keep three feet of distance when it is feasible. That doesn't mean that we are required to. It's a recommend. We know that there are many cases and incidents where having the number of kids that we have in the school, we just won't be able to have three feet apart. But when we can and we can show that we have, and there might be an outbreak, if kids are masked and they're three feet or better, those kids that are even next to a kid that, that may have to be quarantined, if they're three feet apart and they're masked, then they will not have to be quarantined, which is a big difference. It, it will help us feel and keep more kids in school even through potential outbreaks that we may have. So we'll try our best to maintain that three feet distancing. Like I said, it's not always going to be feasible. Whenever there is the opportunity, also I've talked to our, our principals to allow activities outside. When teachers may have a request to have a class, to do activity outside or different things that they may want to do, to really grant those and allow that to, to be able to have that fresh air. We also will allow mask breaks. Kids won't have to wear masks during recess. They won't have to wear them during any, any kind of physical activity. And so they, they won't have to wear them during any, any time that they're eating or drinking or sleeping. We hope the kids aren't sleeping during class, but if they did fall asleep, they wouldn't have to wear a mask during that time. But those are, are some of the things that comes under that with the mask and the physical distancing. We will be checking each, each morning for symptoms and we'll have checkpoints for that and be able to do some screening for that. We also have the opportunity through a program through the University of Oregon to do testing where we actually can send it, if the kid is symptomatic, we can send, we'll kit home with the kid and they can actually do that at their home location. It is a thing that a parent could absolutely opt out. They don't want to be a part of. And they could say, "No, we don't want to do that." But there is the opportunity for testing through that where they will have that screening test and it's an easy thing. They can take those, they can get those results back in just two to three days at topside, I think you said on it. We still have to go through isolation and quarantine as we have had to do before. So that really doesn't change ventilation and airflow, trying to increase the airflow in the, in the buildings. One of the things that we still need to, to look at and one of the things that I've, I've put in the plan is we do have money that we have earmarked for our HVAC system and trying to upgrade those so that we can have better air within the buildings. Also, the other thing is looking at some air purifiers in some of the rooms that we cannot open windows or provide any kind of air ventilation. The other thing was hand washing, just once again, going through the rigmarole of reminding everybody of proper hand washing and what they need to do. And that can also include our hand sanitizers. Hopefully they don't squirt out the edge at you. We'll, we'll be able to fix that. But the cleanliness is important, so we will stress that once again. Cohorts are really not a thing this year, which helps us out because it's almost impossible to cohort, especially at the high school level where kids are in classes and then switching with class periods. And so that, that can be kind of really difficult at the high school level. We will issue kids lockers. They will have, have their lockers. So once again, determining cohorts is a little bit difficult with kids having to go, go to lockers and moving in between class periods. Riley Creek will not cohort, but essentially a class, like a second grade class is a cohort. So it's fairly easy to determine where those kids are going to be during, during their day and to be able to contact trace if we get, if we have any kind of a outbreak. Just an explanation of what an exposure is. On page five I'm at right now, just environmental and cleaning, making sure that we're following through with cleanliness and making sure that the building's clean. Technology, we're still striving to get a one-to-one for devices for kids. We purchased some more that were through, through our summer program, some of the Microsoft services. So we are, are getting there and we're asking the teachers to still have some kind of an online presence to be able to help out, for kids to have any kind of, if they're sick or they're going to be away, to be able to still check in with those teachers and have the opportunity to see what they've missed. And those could be things like putting information in a class website or through Teams. Specialists will be allowed in the building, have to log in, contact, trace them. We do expect to have quite a few of our, our specialists in the building to work with the kids through South Coast ESD. So that's kind of the highlights of, of that framework. The other thing that's not on that, but I know is, is a topic of, that everybody has been wondering about and that is vaccination requirement for all staff. There, it, the, the rule did come out today. It was filed at the OAR. And I got it sent to me late this afternoon. I sent it off to our principals. To be honest with you, I haven't been able to, to read through that OAR. I got it probably about 20 minutes before I had to show up to the, to the Bridge meeting. So, but I, I know some of the things that are, are, are in there. There is an exemption for the employee not to be vaccinated if they have, want a religious exemption or if there is a medical reason why they not, are not to have vaccinations. There are some forms that are supposed to be developed by OHA that will need to be submitted for that. I have a superintendent's meeting tomorrow that will discuss that and get some more direct information from ODE and OHA of what needs to be, be done with that. But the cutoff date is October 18th. If an employee does not have an exemption and have not been vaccinated, then we are required, not just recommended, but required to terminate the employee at that point.
What does that mean for their licensure?
Their licensure is what we were told is they are not following along with specifics that are required of their licensure. And so that they could actually lose their license because of that as well. Yeah. I had a little blurb on that, but I don't have that with me, so I can't, can't give you all the specifics for it.
On a related, somewhat related note, is there any changes to, if there are COVID-related sicknesses among teachers, to how those absences factor into their collective bargaining agreement?
There, there, what is a request for some information from the union as far as this plan goes, our communal disease plan. So I am expecting that they are wanting an MLU or some kind of collective bargaining to come, come forward with it. I have not had a formal request of that. Other districts are seeing those. A lot of them are, are similar to what they, you've seen prior. These, like sick things have been one of the topics that they've talked about. Others have talked about there would be specific coverage for those who were vaccinated and those who aren't vaccinated, they would have to use their sick leave first and then have specific coverage. I can't speak to what our, our union is looking at at all because I don't know.
But there hasn't been any changes to that at, at this point in time?
No. But I do expect so.
Speaking of exemptions, so in the guidance here, accommodations for certain medical needs and, and/or disabilities. Do you have any guidance on that as you're at the student level for masks?
Yeah. At the student level, if they have any need that, once again, is medical, then they have to go through a process for a 504 plan that is under special education and that is for the protection of the individual. And we have to follow through with ADA and IDEA requirements. And so if a student just, for any reason, and it doesn't have to have specifics, there's a lot of difference that are, are there. There are those who have autistic reasons. There are those who physically cannot wear. Then we have to come up with some kind of accommodations for that student. Some of them, those accommodations may be, maybe they can't wear a mask, but they could wear a clear face shield, which is not as effective as a mask or some other things that may be needed. Those will be specific to the students, whatever their needs are. And the team, the IUP team, for students with disabilities will come together and, with the parents. The parents are part of the IUP team and work on whatever requirements are for that student. And the same thing with the parents who are claiming that they have a medical reason, that the kid hasn't been in special education, then they would have to submit through a doctor's note of what that medical exemption would be. And then we would work on getting a 504 plan developed for that student for their medical reasons.
That was the angle I was looking at for using, using that as a need.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. And that is the one thing that we have received guidance that if a student can't wear a mask, to then try to see if all possibility that they could wear a clear face shield. If a student refuses to wear a mask, I'll, I'll go back to that because I was kind of talking about that earlier. If a student refuses to wear a mask, we're supposed to do some reminders, do some education for it. But it straight up says in the guidance, if they will not wear a mask, then they are to be excluded from school.
Any more questions? Comments? All right.
That it?
That's what I had.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving to 7.2, Proclamation Declaring September a Suicide Prevention Awareness and Action Month. I believe, Mr. Clay, that means it's your turn.
Well, is it possible to read the proclamation first?
Absolutely.
I mean, somebody read it from the, the school board?
Any takers tonight?
I heard you rev up.
Yeah. Yeah. It's just old habit. I just. All right. Whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And suicide is a major public health issue that requires vigilant attention and preventative action, especially during times of a pandemic. And whereas 44,834 Oregonians lost their lives to suicide in 2020, including 897 Oregonians. And in 2000, whereas in 2019, suicide was the leading cause of death for 15 to 54-year-old Oregonians. And whereas 20% of Curry County 11th graders reported seriously considering attempting suicide and 9% actually attempted suicide in 2019. And whereas each death by suicide directly impacts numerous family members, friends, loved ones, and by extension, the entire rural community. And whereas research shows that 95% of adults would do something if someone close to them was thinking about suicide, if they only knew what to say or do. Now therefore, the Central Curry School District hereby proclaims- Now therefore, the Central Curry School District hereby proclaims September 2021 as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Action Month. Be it further resolved that the district encourages all citizens to learn the warning signs, trust their gut, and use that information to ask a troubled friend, colleague, or family member, are you okay?
Thank you.
Is that second, whereas, is that supposed to be American versus Oregon?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, I kind of agree that when you say...
Okay, floor's over.
Want to adjust the mic here. For the record, my name is Gordon Clay from Brookings, Oregon. One of the pieces in there I want you to really understand is Oregon is the only state in the nation that has four age categories that suicide is the number one cause of death. And so, and the most anybody else has is three. 23 states don't have one single age category that has suicide as the number one cause of death. Suicide, September is Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month, which offers a chance for frank discussions about suicide and a time to bring awareness to the issue from multiple directions that suicide is a serious public health issue. One thing that was good is that between 2019 and 2020, the suicide rate nationally went down for the first time since 2003. We found however, an increase in rates of suicidal ideation, up almost 11%, suicide attempts up almost 5%, and self-harm up almost 10% during the COVID-19 pandemic. We're seeing more cases of young children from four years old with suicide ideation and attempts, social media and mobile devices, including increasing mental health challenges, brokenness, depression, anxiety, and broken relationships. Data from 2016-17 shows that 85% of depression, addiction, and suicide cases were from people with broken hearts, from intimate relationships, and family drama, 85%. Over 80% of cases from depression were from working people living in their own homes and apartments. We saw 60% increase in depression coming from people working in unhealthy environments from bullying, stress, and abuse. We had a 50% increase in people who felt re-traumatized and revictimized by service providers when they were seeking help. As all of this has led to a significant increase in cases of alcohol and opioid use in people struggling with depression, homelessness, and life issues. Key ongoing uncertainties include a long-term impact of the pandemic on suicide rates as we experience further waves of infection, and as the economic consequences of the pandemic on people's finances and jobs emerge. At-risk groups who have been disproportionately affected by the pandemic include women, young people, those with pre-existing mental health conditions, those whose employment status changes, and those from lower socioeconomic backgrounds. Suicide rates are also higher within vulnerable groups who are subjected to discrimination, including refugees, migrants, prisoners, indigenous people, and then individuals from the LGBT community. The majority of deaths by suicide are preceded by telling signs, either verbal or behavioral. Even without knowing the list of signs, we have all experienced a friend or colleague who wasn't acting like their normal self. As I mentioned in the proclamation, research shows that 95% of adults would do something if somebody close to them was thinking about suicide if they only knew what to do. To learn more, 33 retailers in Gold Beach have signed up to provide crisis cards that you can keep in your wallet, and a brochure with information of what to look for and how to help. Pick one of these up and keep it at home or post it at the office. You can find a list of our partners at zeroattempts.org/curry.html. And when you're there, thank the shop owner for making these materials available. Remember, trust the signs, trust your gut, and start a conversation by simply asking, are you okay? And I went around to each one of those retailers this afternoon and checked to be sure they had plenty of cards and plenty of brochures, and I thanked them for doing that. They've been doing it for five or six years. And anybody else that drops by any of those places, thank them, because they don't need to take up the space on their retail counter for something that doesn't make them money. And they're doing that, they're replacing something that would be on that counter in most cases that they would get a profit off of. Here, they're doing this so they keep their customers as customers. Thank you so much for continuing to support this project, and we really have to protect our kids because not only has it been a tough time, but it is not likely to get better in the near future. And be sure that they know the crisis text line, 741-741. They don't use a phone when they're in crisis, they use a text. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. I move we accept the proclamation as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? All right. Seven point three, English Language Learners State Report.
Yep. I have to fulfill my duties to make sure that you receive the English Language Learners report produced by the state. Today I will also have to put this on our website. This is just informational for you, there's not really anything that we have to go through with it other than that you have received it. We have a very low number of English Language Learners. Because we have such a low number, I can't tell you because we couldn't be identifiable. So other than telling you that, we will continue to work with our English Language Learners, and they are a part of our state report as well, but you will never see direct information of what we have from our district because of our low numbers. We get an asterisk.
All right, questions on that? Thank you, Mr. Milburn. Number eight, citizen input on agenda items only. Same rules apply, limit of two minutes per person. There's any takers? All right. Moving on, board member reports.
Well, let's see. I'm excited for the new school year, I'm excited for the new staff and the new administration, and I just want to show my support to all of you, and I think it will be a great year contrary to all the things that we still continue have to do. Eventually, we will evolve, but I think supporting what we need to do to keep our kids in school and let them be able to come and meet is what is needed, and support is what I plan on
Thank you. Mr. McNair?
I guess I'd just comment on, I mean, I understand the frustration of parents, and I think we're all in the same frustration, the constantly changing target. I mean, being in private business myself, it's the same frustration. So I think for those parents to go away today, to think that we're not hearing them is not accurate. I just don't have a, I don't know the answer, and I think, you know, we're held to a public standard, even in the meeting tonight, it's a publicly held meeting, and it's just a tough situation to be in. I mean, I would echo, and I appreciate what you said, I think the most important thing is to get kids back in the school. We have to wear a mask, so be it. I think the most important thing is to have kids back in the school, back with teachers, back on a regular routine the best we can. Because we sat here a month ago and asked the question, what's our prediction on changes coming? And we, you know, we received the guidance as recommendations about exactly a month ago, and within that timeframe, obviously masks has come up, and, you know, I'm worried that, I won't say that I'm optimistic that something else is not going to change between now and when we go back to school. And that's a tough environment for administrators to be in, to try and figure out how to jump through all that hoops, let alone brand-new administrators. I mean, that's a double down, so I wish you guys the best, and I think just going into it with the idea that we're doing the best that we can for kids, and I think that will always hold true.
Thank you. Mr. Skinner?
Yeah, that's really well said, and yesterday, as an example, I like at about 3:30 screamed in my office because there was another change with masking that applied to what I'm doing. And, you know, we had shifted all of our programs outside, and all of a sudden now that's an issue at some level. So to say that, yeah, understand where the pressure that you guys are under, and also understand the frustrations of parents. So, but I would say that what the folks that were here earlier don't see and don't know that we know is the advocacy that Mr. Milburn has made at the state level, and I really do appreciate that. There is an effort, we have made an effort to be heard, that we want to make these choices for ourselves. So, and then I guess my last piece is, you guys probably all know, but as a part of our consent agenda, Carly Wright will be working at the school, no longer running the after-school program. And so I'm just here to say that the after-school program, the library's going to work with Carly to make sure that we have some kind of a transition in place. The nice thing is, is that we don't even know what our guidance is for after-school really, so, I mean frankly, I guess it's okay that we don't have somebody running the program. We don't have somebody stressing out and dealing with the changes every day. But we are going to try to get that going, and we really literally are waiting on, because the guidance that the state issues has to then be vetted by the federal government before it can be come back and we can be told that it's okay to follow the state guidance, we've got a little bit of a lag there. So we're waiting to hear on that, and we will, once we have that in place, move forward with the plan. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I think I've done enough talking for tonight. I will echo everybody's, everybody covered all the bases I want to cover. I mean, my main hope for this year is kids in the building on a regular schedule, you know, and if that requires masks, then, you know, I mean, I get it, I can go find five studies that say one thing, and the other side can go find five more that say the other. There's no winning the argument right now, everybody's angry and running on emotion. You know, I want the kids in the building five days a week, period, and that's my focus, so. First day of school, September 7th, 2021, after Labor Day. Next regular board meeting, September 15th, 2021, 6:00 p.m. And with that, if there's anything else, I will adjourn this meeting. 7:00.